All right, good evening, I'm all open up this special meeting for a brief budget discussion with the town manager.
Okay, uh, I sent everybody an email yesterday, so everybody saw that. As far as the proposal that I have in front of you now, I, I think that there's a couple of talking points here. Yeah, I, I think I'm more than anything just looking for some clarification on, um, from the board where I can make some adjustments if I need to. Prior to our public hearing that we'll have next week. Um, but it's, as far as anything else in here, um, with the, with the amount, you know, with the resources that we have to work with here. You know, I think that it's about as tight as I can get, you know, with the exception of a couple of things, but there's, there's a couple of changes that I've made since the original proposal that I made to you. We actually got some payments delayed in the year, uh, actually last week. On utility franchise and local option sales tax that those should get a bit over before we get the budget, so I accounted for, for those in here. I went ahead and, and took some money that I had originally appropriated into the police department. Before I was aware that there was a, a, a position that, that was frozen, I think in January. Talked to chief, um, just to make sure that, that he understood and, and viewed that we were gonna go without that position being replaced. He was fine with that. I, I decreased our utility increase, you know, I, I put twenty percent in, I, I decreased that down to five percent, that's what's in there now. But as far as other wiggle room in here, other than the, the utility rates, that's, that's a point of discussion. We also have, still in this proposal is, is a five percent increase for, for employees, it's still in here. That's a talking point, um, that may be something that, that I put five percent in, um, we could talk about that. I mean, if you wanted to repair that, if you want to cut that to half, if you want to do other things. That five percent adds twenty-four thousand eight hundred fifty dollars of us, that's what it adds total for the year. That's for all of our employees excluding myself. Three percent would be fourteen thousand nine hundred, you just do, you just do the math on, on what that would be, but there's, there is some wiggle room there, um, as far as, as bottom line numbers, but other than that, without we get to the point of firing people. Yeah, I, I say firing people, I mean eliminating positions. It's about as tight as I can get. So, I, what I'm looking for is hopefully consensus in a direction from the board tonight on, on a couple of these talking points where we can come in here, you know, in a public hearing form and, you know, everybody kinda, but not that everybody has to be on the same page, it doesn't always work that way, we know that, but at least we all know where we are sitting on this side of things, we're at a trade with the public that we don't know what, you know. That's what I'm asking for and I'm, I'm, I'm here willing to, to make any adjustments that I need to, but these are adjustments that are board, they're board decisions, so that's what I'm looking for.
I know we're starting to talk on Saturday. I know we're starting Saturday, we can start waving, say, we're just down here a little bit.
That's, that's what I'm talking about.
Starting with yours. Gotta laugh, keep them crying, right? Gotta laugh, keep them crying.
I think, um, we lose money on a tag office every year and there's no way we're gonna make seventy-five thousand dollars in revenue. Even if the county did give us the thirty-five thousand, and they're not, it's twenty.
Yeah.
It's twenty thousand every year and that's what they appropriated this year.
How much is the shortfall?
Nobody, twenty.
It's gonna build over the county, I don't care if they're appropriate or not, we agreed to take on that headache.
We have a contract.
Understand that, but contract's gonna be renegotiated and.
Contract, then it can be renewed.
Let's have the, sort of conversation with Phillip and say, hey, we're, you know, the town's not gonna keep paying to have the tag office open.
The, the, the tag offices, what I have in here now, as far as revenue, is based on what we've actually collected for the year, um, and that's not with the whole year, that's with actually another month ago. Year to date, we're at seventy-five thousand five ninety, um, and fifty-nine cents, and that'll be a little more than that. But to Christie's point, um, our expenditure for, for that tag office, or you can, you can tag it, but at the bottom of the line, you know, our expenditure is a hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars, so to, to make the statement that we're not, that we're losing money in a tag office is correct about.
Do you see other towns that has tag offices in the town halls or anything?
No, I, I.
I mean, I, I don't have a problem with it being in the town hall, I just think we could renegotiate or maybe could just go renew the contract in January. And that's a hundred, what do you have, a hundred and fifteen thousand?
Boone used to have it.
One fifteen and we're making eight, so.
Well, 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 Park County used to have somebody else run it. And then there was a big.
A lot of them are individuals.
Yes, responsibility.
Yeah, it's, it's, it, and I told, I told you, it's, it's unusual, um, but I've also, you know, understood that it may be looked at as a service, quote unquote, that we may be providing, but it's not just people that live here, they're coming in here, obviously, they're coming from here today, so.
We can't, we can't lose twenty and thirty thousand dollars, just.
But I, I, I agree that, that the answer to that will be to renegotiate that and, and if, and if we can't get there, then we look at options.
I don't think it's an options thing, I'd say you either pony up the difference or we're gonna pull out and.
They kind of ran this in January, it's probably, you know, I know that they've got their, their, their timeframe is like our timeframe. They can all make a name instead of, but I do know the county broke off there. At least that's what Phillip puts it.
Fourteen million dollars in the bank and that broke, that's what, that's, well, that's what, okay.
So Phillip, that's, Phillip told me, he said, said that they're, um, they've got a preparation for four and a half million dollars on the scoreboard, school board, school board, once nine million dollars, they don't have enough money. So, what they've done with, of course, everything's happening, buying a property and new one, remember, because from Phillip's, or is that?
At least they're buying an apartment now.
I mean, I'll be glad to, you know, I've already managed to get it already, and I mean, I know they're, they're through the budget process, but that's just, it's a matter of amendment for them, I mean, it's, it's not like it's closed doors. So, yeah, I'll be glad to, uh.
And I'll wait it for me, anyone, if we didn't renew the contract, anyone moving the tag office out of town, which would create rental income.
Yeah.
And.
Remy, you, you don't see them moving it?
No, I mean, it, I mean, it's in a good location, I don't see it.
Yeah, but for instance, if I, like, for instance, if I were to entertain getting the contract and taking it over, I would just go to town hall. But my point is, 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 most people will because, because of the parking issue.
Yeah, but then you could move, you could rent that space, I would think.
Um, also, speaking of rental, is she here staying because they are supposed to be leaving their top mission up there?
I'm pretty sure they'll be staying.
In the rental department, bought thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, I talked, I talked to him, I talked to him every, every day, um. Where are we at on that?
You're following the revenue table first page.
So, bring the first page.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I've got it right here, I'm just trying to figure it out. No, I, I don't, I don't think that they have any plans, at least he's not told me that, I mean, I could ask him that.
They even broke, they even broke ground in the place, they really.
They're just now getting the, their, their contract flying up to.
I would ask him because I think if we have a contract up here, it's through all this, so he may, he may wanna renew if they're going to stay.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we're happy to talk to them, because AIC's in there every day.
Now, you said you're not gonna ask for twenty percent fee?
Right on down, um, and, and just real, just finish the, the rental income, what, what I want to do is the amount that, that we're charging for, for DMV license, the licensed tag office, which obviously hit or the tag office and you got the license, driver's license office, they're paying, the driver's license office people are paying us two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Probably have been for years, however long.
And we have a contract with them and it's also through July, I mean, January, and my plan is to try, to, we need to increase that, we need to increase that rental income, so that's the reason that those numbers kinda jumped up there, now, that's my intention there too, that surely, I don't think they're gonna have any problem because we've basically been given them that spot and it's used, trust me, if anybody's ever up here on Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, I mean, this place is full, it's every day, so I'll, uh, I'll, I'll work on that, but the, back to utilities, yeah, I, I, I went from twenty, figured in here it's twenty percent, in my original proposal, this is down to five percent now, um. And I'm willing to do whatever the board wants to do on that.
Would it not be better because you have older citizens and all that, just to do a set fee per month per bill? And that way you're not punishing, that's why I like to say workers punish.
Remy, my set fee, cause it's, it's done by how much is used, you say just add like five, ten dollars per?
Yeah, like five dollars per month on each bill. Everybody's bill's gonna have five dollars.
On top of what, like, so my bill on average between sixty and seventy bucks, so now.
So, it'll be seventy-five.
I could live with that.
Can the state live with that?
Oh, yeah.
All the state will see is us going up.
Yeah, they, they just, all they want to see is, is that we're doing something to generate more resource out of that money.
But, though, I mean, if not, you go up five percent on a lot of businesses, people would actually murder you.
Pardon?
Five, five percent on a water bill would murder you.
Twenty percent would.
On a restaurant? Had you ever paid five dollars a five percent day? Which way did you ever go with this?
It's kinda obvious.
I'm, 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 I'm hurt, I will be gratefully happy with five dollars.
That's down there to evil, let her hear that.
Pardon?
Is that five dollars across the board and on for businesses as well?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, our businesses, but, you know.
Man, and obviously, I guess the people that are, that are paying outside rates, that would be ten dollars, right?
Absolutely, yeah, if they're paying outside pound rates, it would be ten dollars.
I, I.
Why wouldn't businesses pay a little more than residential though, because businesses pay more per whatever, per gallon, so why wouldn't we say, okay, business is twenty-five dollars rise, add it on tariff, and residential's five? I mean, what I, my point is, is we've got to bring some money in to try and start putting back into it, and if we're, you know, if we're letting Dave who's over here making the bank waste, you know, going roe fish and, you know, chicken.
John said six months, probably the entire year.
Yeah, he ain't going nowhere, I don't, I don't know why we're talking about it.
Just so you know.
What's that?
He's ever taken John, I mean, he's, you know, we're, we're in a meeting, he's ever taken somebody, I said, it's fine.
He's a buzzing man, and he did ask a question about, he cares for X on.
He bans trains.
What'd he say?
He said at least six months, he said probably.
An expensive at least six months.
He said he, he can't see why it wouldn't be a year, he said, certainly six months.
That's pretty, pretty spot on, don't they?
I mean, like I said, I don't wanna hurt citizens, I don't wanna hurt businesses.
Well, it's asked David.
We killed him last year with his taxes.
Yeah, killed him with that tax hot. I agree with that. I mean, it went up and let's be honest, we're not right now, and I know you've got planes, Mr. Evelyn, but right now, we're not offering a whole lot of services for what they're giving.
Right now. Right now. And, and, I mean, this, I mean, this proposal's, we have to make, we're gonna start filling that public board's floor, because it's very important, we know that. We, we need to be out here providing, we need people to run equipment, we need people that can, can, about, you know, come out or come from, we need people that go around here and buy down rounds, brush rounds, and eventually hopefully get something, you know, we can come back with the services, all that, and people, we need.
Yeah, Dave, I'm not sure, do you want to care, can you turn that thing?
I did, but I just didn't.
So, can I ask a question, so the twenty-five dollars is just a straight twenty-five dollar fee added to their work, to the business's work?
Correct.
It's not percentage?
No, like, Ms. Carol, what, what we're saying is like yours would go up five dollars.
And Dave's, his restaurant will go up twenty-five dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
I was too busy trying to play, Dave, you can answer his questions.
It's twenty-five, bears over to make a business.
I don't think twenty-five is enough.
For a business?
If it's a business, they're making money.
Yeah, but, but, but you don't wanna run a high business over the water. I mean, I would say maybe ten for the business. But the double rates, now remember this, if the business is on pound of water out of town, they're just going to twenty if you set it at ten, and ten is their residential.
Is it twenty-five dollars for water and twenty-five dollars for sewer?
No, it's a cross.
Yes, that would be, that would be added on to the water.
Yeah, two dollars and a half for service is all that would be. And I think that would be more acceptable than the five percent.
We need two dollars.
Two dollars, two and a half for water, two and a half for service.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
I'm not against the, the five dollars, I think that's a good idea, but how would that change the?
Five dollars brings up a thirty thousand dollars.
You got, you got a big old math on that.
Having a residential and having businesses.
We have three, we have three hundred and ninety-one thousand, I've already done math on, on, on the percentage, but five dollars, that's twenty, 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 twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars.
Well, that gets a stay off the town's back.
Yeah, absolutely.
It was addressed to businesses, businesses, it needs to be more than residential.
Or is it ten?
Oh, that's spectacular.
How about ten dollars a bag, gives you one hundred and twenty?
I'll leave the twenty dollars to everybody, he can, he can afford it, I'll argue.
You don't get it yet.
I can live with that.
All right.
Or a bullet point, ten, ten on businesses?
Five for, for residents in town, out of town, it's twenty for business, and ten, yes, just double.
For this year.
Yeah.
Okay, now, what do y'all think about employee raises that I have in the budget now?
I think there needs to be something, but I, I think I just think it's a bit hot, so we can knock that down to maybe three percent.
I would say two, two and a half, and see where we are at Christmas. If we have the money, the, enough to give a bonus.
Along with Jevy.
My, my major.
Well, I was, I've talked about that for years, going with the longevity.
A lot of towns do that. A lot of towns do that, I'm sure.
Well, it needs to be a system where they, they can look forward to it, know what they're looking forward to.
Yeah, on their anniversary.
Right, turkey, turkey, you know, the board's in a good mood, or we have town manager lying to us about how much money we have. So, can we do this longevity, so I don't, you know.
Well.
Shot.
Yeah, does that have a shot? That was a shot, it would've shot our new town now, it seems like it.
It may have been shot in past.
Past, yeah.
In the past.
So, as long as Jevy government talk for, it's set, they understand what they're gonna get, they've been here a while.
Based on how long it began.
Yeah.
Well, let's do that.
Up to a certain amount.
Yeah, let's do that, that way they can look.
That might take a minute to implement.
Yeah, I mean, I would have to put the penny on that.
By July?
That'd be great.
By July, that'd be great, that is, yeah.
No, actually it's not.
Might be three, eight government now. All right, what else do you want to address?
How does that sound, because it's gonna be more than a bonus they would get. It's gonna be more, but then that would alleviate a lot of, well, do we have the money for a bonus, and then if they don't get it, they get mad, we feel bad, so that would just be.
Yeah, that'll take all, I guess, it is.
Yeah, I think you and I've talked about that for years and.
Can we, uh, can we talk about that second, uh? On the first or second page of this, you know, you're talking about the, the actual orders. And that's not, that's not, that's probably the, it's not, uh, it's not.
More than seven, I think.
I am reading that.
Where, where, yeah, section five, that, that's our, that's our tax base, according to the scroll, for the county tax scroll, um.
And we're not changing, right?
Seventy, we don't, we don't have. We, uh, don't have a choice, on, on the, on the base, we don't, and that's seventy-nine eighty-five hundred twenty thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars, you do the math, out of the fifty-six cents per hundred dollar valuation, that's where you come up with your tax revenue. What was your question there?
Uh, so what is our, what is our current?
Fifty-six cents.
That's our current, yeah, that, that's our, our current tax rate and, and not proposed tax rate.
Yeah, proposed change fifty-six.
Okay, thank you.
It's early. So, I'll go back and I will, uh, do you want me to make an adjustment to the, uh, to the employee raises down to two and a half, three, what do you want?
If they're gonna get longevity, it's gonna be more than they would get for a bonus.
And then, and then do the, uh, do the spreadsheet on the longevity, uh, bonus.
Yeah, but generally, well, what, like, Christie, are you, are you saying that the board's gonna commit to longevity once Dave puts that together, is that what you're saying?
I mean, that's what I've learned for years, I don't think more than they make bonuses and stuff.
Generally, that's paid in November, sometime in November.
It's anniversary date or November, it, whatever.
Generally, they love the November.
Paid the, paid before the Thanksgiving holiday.
Then, are you okay with that?
I, I would be okay with longevity, I, yeah, I would be okay with that.
Do two and a half and then see about, you know, put some kind of longevity.
Two and a half, the spreadsheet, give them longevity things.
I think it might end up being more than three percent.
I think you brought it right.
Yeah, it would.
Because that goes based on the salary, like, if they would be interested.
I think you brought it right about that, and then I'll, uh.
Well, do it in November, don't, don't do it in February.
Yeah, I like November, and any employees will too, because it's a holiday time.
And you know, help make up a little money, you know, none of us takes up five. Except Mayor and Rick, 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 that is.
Somebody, somebody's home, man.
Who wants to cut tomorrow's half in half?
Yeah, I mean, we could do that.
Oh.
We could cut his in half for now.
I think it needs to go up.
We need to get.
I did notice that you had it in here, remember, I, uh, we did take that out.
I think that's just, you know.
I, I do, I ran those numbers out based on year-to-date actuals, I wasn't sure.
But it would have been almost a little special, maybe we'd pay them, we could do, put it back in the taxes.
Well, heck, he, he can tell you how many times I had to use my gas to clean up around the building or, it's nuts.
So, I, I'll go back and make the adjustments on the utility side, I'll make the adjustments on the, uh, the, the increase, uh, salary increases, and I'll do a spreadsheet on longevity.
And there's nothing, and, and I know Mike, you're sitting back there, and, and you thought I was gonna forgive, but if there's nothing else, a half million dollars.
It's three and a half, Lord, less than the same size department, shouldn't matter.
Or how many people then? We, three hundred and ninety-four people, how many, what are we?
One thing, it's not a big amount of money, but it's probably gonna need to change, um, uh, on administration, at least the board, I'm not doing this for, for the next couple of months, and then you got the election coming up, some other folks that may or may not get on. That's just for two cents, man, I think I did my yearly due. And I'm not, as long as I'm still gonna be back on this, but anyhow, so, I'm thoroughly sure that anybody else's opinion of this, but depending on election, depending on whoever else may or may not, so maybe a moving number.
Of course.
I don't know. You ain't gonna put any in, man.
But are you running for, are you running for later?
I don't know, if you are, we're at this debate, you feel a lot that, I'm just kidding.
I, I told David I, I wasn't going to, but I was gonna run, Scott Stevens, sir.
I appreciate that.
Get elected, it's, it's, we're.
We're gonna go down a good road, it, I just, I would like the people that are here to go down a way of course, but I hope that's whatever.
Phenomenal the difference when you got somebody that's, give me your real numbers, it's a treat.
I'm not.
Well, same here, that's true.
She's not, and leave that for one minute?
All right, all right, let's get back to this.
I'm, I'm on it, so you, you were on getting there to get to a point here, I got what I need.
And, Mike, is there nothing we can do to cut that down?
He's gotta do this thing about Mike Nelson now.
A little bit.
We can cut it, but, I mean, really, as far as bombs, we can do with it.
All right, and we were looking at something the other day, take home cars.
Yeah.
And we figured that that generated, you had two thousand dollars, but when we read that and it came up a little bit.
Yeah.
You don't think that would save eight, nine thousand dollars a year?
I don't think it would save anywhere near that much. I mean, that's just my opinion, I don't.
I mean, because, I mean, and, and I understand, you got, they live where they live, that's nothing, but you got cars going a good distance.
Yeah.
So.
Is there anyone else on the board who's even entertaining, canceling, take on the board, are you entertaining that?
I would entertain it.
Dave?
I talked to you, threw an engine discussion in there, but, I mean.
I would, much rather see them get a little bit of stock, because the wear and tear on those cars, I mean, you know, we can't afford to buy cars right now. And of course, they're gonna keep theirs because they got the dollars. And all that, but like I said, but now. Like I said, but now, Mike, he did get a grant, it's not in here, it's the forty-five thousand dollar grant.
That's, we don't have to pay him money.
No, that's not up front, we have no, out of pocket on that. I did get an email from them.
Tell them to stop.
Yesterday, or is it? Do what?
Tell them to stop.
Okay, so I got an email from Friday last week, you know, big congratulatory email from the, you know, governor's crime commission, that you, you've been selected for the grant, okay? Tickle to death, that's when I sent you all the email, you know, let you all know what we got. I got an email yesterday, or the day before. I sent it to Dave, um, said that that email, the congratulatory email, was sent in error.
Can you believe that?
None of the. See, we weren't the only ones that got one.
Say if you send out something like that, that is an error.
It didn't say, it's not that we're not getting the grant, it was sent out prematurely.
Yeah.
None of the applications have been.
It was like, here you go, all been in mind.
Well, that happened last year with, with other people, their state raises, or their sign-off bonuses, but. I'm all, they're wrong.
That's called a Carolina bait and switch, bro.
Like, uh, the guy that does the grants for the sheriff's office, he applied for the same grant, and, uh, as soon as I saw the, the email that we were getting the grant, I seen him a text and said, hey, we got. Got an email says we're getting a grant, did you get one? And five minutes later, goes, yeah, we're getting the grant too, but, I'm saying he got an email saying it was premature too, so.
All right. Run again.
Another question on the grant.
Sure.
The town would pay twenty-five percent.
Of what?
With grant, they, they pay the rest.
That is a hundred percent grant.
That one, that, the one he's speaking of is a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, actually, we talked about one, the first year was twenty-five percent.
Yeah, that's an implore.
Yeah, that's the higher.
But this is just a straight difference, they sent us the money, or sent us the equipment.
Yeah.
This is just an equipment, a hundred percent pay grant that he's talking about right now.
If, if we are so strapped that we need to think about either letting people go or.
We're not that strapped, nobody's talking about that.
Yeah, we're not strapped. Well, I would think that cars would need to go before people.
Right.
Yeah, nobody's gonna buy any cars, though.
She meant, I meant, I meant not taking home cars.
But, I mean, Dave, you're not giving me any indication we're strapped, is Ms. Christie, Debbie Downer wants to make that.
Not Debbie Downer.
It's, it's not what I thought it was gonna be coming in, I'll just put it that way. And, 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 and I'll say that the reason, the reason that is, is because y'all took measures last year. To stabilize, you know, where we were hurting the most at the time, and that was in the general fund, and, and, and that tax rate increase, it, it helped, you know, it helped a lot. And that along with some of our reimbursements that were higher than what we thought, but, but no, it's, uh. I've seen worse. Let's put it that way, it's not as bad as it's worth.
Seen better?
I've seen better, I've made better, I'm gonna make better air, you just gotta get my hat.
Um, this occupancy tax, I don't, can it, I don't think it can go in general, though.
Twenty-five percent.
Not the general, it has to go into another.
Twenty-five percent you can go.
It can go into generals.
Seventy-five percent has to go for advertisements, which is.
With fireworks, not really, I listen.
You can control.
To, to a rhythm.
Need to give them something?
All right, all right, and I think that should be the last thing, something right here, on fireworks thing, who in here has had the discussion, has anybody talked to me? About Mike and fireworks, just so I, I just didn't know.
Talked about that for months.
I know, this most recent thing, so nobody's.
Nobody talks to me, no.
Well, Dave, okay, so here's what's going on, um, so, the town, for the first time in a long time, elected not to do fireworks, because we were led to believe we were slap-assed, so we all agreed on it.
I don't know why you're looking at me.
I'm just, so, the town elected not to do fireworks this year, we elected to allow Mike Nelson do that. So, I wasn't sure why the town kept saying that we are going with Mike if we're not Mike. So, anyway, Mike picked up a banner for the town, and was trying to do fireworks, he paid a deposit on fireworks, I think around five thousand dollars. Uh, to get his fireworks in, then he started getting beat up by the fire marshal, and the fire marshal did the same thing last year, but wasn't as aggressive as he has, as being this year.
When you talk to me, he needs six thousand dollars to pay him to do a, for a real good fireworks show.
And basically what I'm saying is, I am asking that the town help, only up to help Mike, because he's overextending himself, only because of extenuating circumstances he could not control. And then in the same turn, I like the town to consider in this budget, finding out how much it's gonna cost to get somebody like Anthony Pauliges or one of our firemen. The certificate, whatever, the piece of paper that all the candidates need to have, so we're not paying a thousand dollars a minute.
That's the issue, is, this is a, this is a monopoly, if you will.
It's ridiculous.
There's one company that shoots fireworks.
That's what all of them used to have there.
Fire department had, Anthony Pauliges had it, and Dave Coward's being blamed for this, and I have him to defend Dave on this, but then we went away from the fire department going, and went to Mr. Wright, who's the monopoly man. And now, what I'm asking is, we help out Mike, okay, and we'll have a doubly good fireworks show, and then when we're finished, I'm also asking that we allow Dave, that we worked with Anthony Pauliges, to get. He or somebody's in the town with that certificate, so that we're not paying a thousand dollars a minute to fire fireworks. First and foremost, do we have the six thousand dollars to be able to?
Yes, yes.
We already discussed that, we discussed that at our last meeting, too. This has been going on for months, and that six thousand is what we discussed months ago.
Does anyone remember that discussion? Because I remember.
You told me last month.
You, I remember you telling, when we were talking about in the budget, which would have to be now, you saying, you know, if the town's broke, which is what we were being told, while we're paying for fireworks, and then I said, well, that's the most American shit I've ever heard of.
That was last month.
And then, that was not last month, that was him, him and his parade thing.
Was last month?
That was not.
I think, I think, it was the Jew meeting.
It was the, it was the budget meeting last year when she said that about.
I did say that.
Yeah, I did say that.
But I think that the factor, the unknown factors are that Mike cannot shoot these fireworks on himself.
Correct, correct, this.
If he shoots one.
He gets a five, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Five hundred dollar fine, every firecracker he shoots off.
He's sure if we don't help him out on this, he's not gonna do it, and then.
Every town's not gonna have fireworks, except.
So, so, and the money's there, and I need to go ahead and.
He can see a bonus on it, because it's not.
No, I'm thinking it's broke, I think we just need to go ahead and.
Just tell him to do a budget amendment.
I'm just listening to you talk.
Do we need to tell you to do a budget amendment?
I don't, I don't need to hear, I'm sorry.
All right, this meeting's a journey.
You're part of the board, Dave, to do a budget.
Yeah, so.
Well, you've got five thousand on, on that eight, now. So, you got for entertainment or whatever.
Six.
Yeah, I didn't have a budget in there, but I can put it in pace, it's, it's not a issue.
It should have been.
What are we gonna do about it?
Yeah, it promotes the.
Yeah, we know, it's.
I'm gonna make a deal with you, right?
My deal is.
Please stop.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just.
Really seeing you, because if you do, I'll see you.
I'll really bring a bill with everyone, okay?
And you don't want that.